I'd like to call to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, December 2nd, Concord, Ohio. If we can have the pledge allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please call the role?
Okay. Mr. Schindler?
Present.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Here.
Mr. Terriaco?
Here.
And Mr. Ruppert?
We have four out of five?
Yep.
So, we're going to go into approval of the minutes for November 4th. We had them in the package that I had, and I did not have any comments.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to approve the minutes of November 4th, 2025.
I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay. Minutes are approved. Correspondents? Frank?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing.
Nothing. Rich?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Ron?
Nothing.
Okay. Chairman has nothing, so we have no correspondence. Zoning inspector report. Heather?
Okay.
I hope you had a good time on your time off?
I did, thank you. I apologize if I was not here at the last meeting.
Oh, you don't have to apologize.
All right. Looks like you guys still had a productive work session, obviously. But just a quick update regarding the October and November zoning activity. During the month of October, we processed 39 zoning permit applications and collected about $6,100 in permit fees. Most of those permits were for the residential projects and included 11 new accessory buildings, nine new single-family dwellings, six decks, five additions onto homes, four fences, two new wall signs for commercial businesses, an alteration, and one change of use. Also, so it's pretty busy in October. During November, we had 14 zoning permit applications and $3,600 in fees, again mostly residential, four accessory buildings, four new single-family dwellings, three fences, two decks, and one new commercial building. Now, the new commercial building was for the daycare, the Primrose School.
The one on the roundabout?
Yes, near the roundabout at Almond Capital. Just a quick update on the BZA variance, variance applications that were in front of them. In October, the board had four different hearings. One of them was for a property owner that had less than one acre of land in an R1 district that was looking to have more than one detached accessory building. And additionally, for the setback requirement, they were asking for a variance to the setback. Both those variance requests were denied. There was another variance application for a property owner in an R1 district that looking for variance, variances to the setback requirements for an accessory building. For this one, the application was approved. And then there was another variance application for, this was a corner lot in an R1 zoning district, that property owner was looking to put up a six-foot-tall fence on the side of the property that was too close to the road right-of-way. That variance request was approved to allow the six-foot instead of the four-foot tall. Seeing a handful of those type of requests on corner lots where they're trying to enclose the rear yard, but the way the resolution is set up, it cannot go any closer to that public road right-of-way than the edge of the house currently sits, which for some folks it cuts off some of their property. So, kind of seeing, that tends to be a lot of, you know, a variance that comes up quite a bit for corner lots. And then the last one was a variance request on a lot that was part of the Quail Hollow PUD for a larger diameter freestanding gazebo. They wanted to do a 25-foot diameter gazebo, and the resolution restricted them to a 14-foot. That variance request was approved.
Do you attend all the BCA meetings?
I do, yeah. I'm the secretary for that board as well. And if you're ever curious, you know, they are videoed and recorded and reposted on the YouTube channel. So, I do try to monitor those as well, just from a zoning perspective, like putting my zoning inspector hat back on, like if we tend to see similar requests over and over, sometimes that may be an issue with something in the resolution that this board may want to address in the future. Yeah. And as I mentioned to you, when I emailed you guys the packet, we did receive correspondence from Mr. Rich Peterson. Unfortunately, he has had to make the tough decision, and effective November 11th, he did step down from this board as a zoning commission member due to some personal reasons, some health issues.
How many years has Rich been?
Rich been on the board just over 15 years. So, he's, the whole time I was here, before I started here, so. I will definitely miss his, him on the board. He was, he was a good member to be with, so. With that being said, we do have, you know, a couple seats that the trustees do have to fill. We have his position, and we still have an alternate position open. And I know I've talked to Ron, he's been willing to fill in until some decision has been made regarding getting a permanent replacement, so.
Do we want to send him a letter of recognition, thanks of some sort, for his service?
The trustees?
Um, yeah, I mean, I could talk to the trustees about doing that. I don't, they have done my proper-
I know we'd sign it, and trustees would sign it, I'm sure you would too. Just a little thank you note or whatever?
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can look into that, for sure. Yeah. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Public participation. Yeah, if you'd like, unless you want it.
Afternoon, everybody. My name is Derek Gardner, and we live at 10676 Proudy Road, me and my wife and my family. Come tonight to kind of ask us a question regarding the construction that's currently going down on Proudy Road with Blackmore Estates. We've been kind of trying to figure out our round timeframe on stuff on that. And then the rumor mill was that we were getting more with the KB Farms being demolished. So, we wanted to see if there was a timeline, like stuff like that, when that project were to be starting, just because the, obviously the noise, I don't know if you guys have heard from trustee meetings, we've been, you know, we were complaining about the noise just because of a lot of the in and out of the heavy vehicles, they were starting a little early, things like that nature. So, we, that would be our main concern right now, is to kind of figure out if we know a timeline, or if anyone knows a timeline on Blackmore, if they're going to start building homes, they've been moving dirt out a lot lately. But we wanted to know if there's like a rough timeline on that project, and if there was any truth to KB Farms being demolished. And, you know, I think it was a 50-home development going in, is what we were told a couple of meetings ago. So, I didn't know if there's any kind of more information on that whole situation and kind of when that would be looking to start, or if it is, so. And that's probably the basis of where we wanted to start, so.
Okay. From the board standpoint, I don't know if we can answer that, but Heather, can you?
I could, I could try to help with that. So, I'm Heather Freeman, I'm not only the secretary to the board, but also the zoning inspector, so I'm the department head down in the zoning office on the day-to-day. So, timeframe, so Blackmore Estates, you know, as you know, it's currently under construction, the development itself. The Lake County actually approved that process, so they're getting ready to get their final approver, approval by the Lake County Commissioners. And when they get the final approval to dedicate the road and create the lots, then they will start building the houses. So, probably within a few weeks, I would anticipate some home construction possibly starting, if not before the end of the year. Regarding the timeframe to build all those houses, I mean, that's really a question maybe for Billy Dawson. Because it all depends on, you know, when the lots are sold, and how long those homes take to build, and, you know, I'm not sure how quickly they build their custom homes.
Okay, I didn't know if it was, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just didn't know if it was like a, they build them all and then they sell them, or is it like a build as they, like, hey, our lot's for sale?
Right.
You know, because, you know, growing up, we had a couple of those developments in my area that, that a lot would sit for sale for a long time, and they're like, oh, no one's going to buy that, and then finally, boom, you're like, oh, it's just like this never-ending trickle-down of construction, so.
So, I don't know exactly what Billy Dawson is planning for that, but I know historically his developments, he doesn't usually do spec homes and then try to sell them. Usually the lots are sold, and he's customizing each home for each, you know, lot owner.
Okay.
So, he may already have a couple, you know, pre-sold.
Okay.
I don't know if you've tried to reach out to him, just to maybe talk to him about maybe what his timeframe is, or he might be able to tell you more about that.
Okay, so.
And then the, the other development, the KB Farms, the Kettlebrook Farms, I've spoken to the developer, you know, he's not submitted anything to the township or the county for any approval on that quite yet.
Okay.
We still don't know if he's going to request a rezone of the property, it's currently zoned R1. So, if he does request a rezone of the property, that would involve some public hearings here at the township level.
Ah, okay.
If he does not request a rezone, and he decides to develop it as it's currently zoned, then those approvals come, he works through the county to get that approved, Lake County Planning Commission, Lake County Engineer, Stormwater Engineer, and, but as of right now, it's, it's difficult to know the timeframe, timeline on that, because nothing has been submitted.
Okay, yeah, we were, we were under the impression that they were like starting in next year, you know, that was what we were heard, and we were like...
I mean, and it's, I mean, you know, if he submits over the winter, and gets all the stuff planned, you know, approved, I mean, maybe he could start the development, you know, next year.
Okay.
But then you still have to build the roads and build all the infrastructure, bring the sewer and water and all of that, so I don't know when the first house would be built for September.
Yeah, okay.
But it does take several months probably to get the plans approved by the county. And then again, if he's asking for a rezone, that adds on more time to that.
Okay, gotcha.
So, in the past, he's, he was going to start the project and then didn't, so it's difficult to tell when the developer's really going to be working.
Gotcha, understandable. And forgive me, is R1 would be that single home, or is, is that what R1 means?
R1 is one of the residential districts.
Okay.
So, if you look in the zoning resolution, the R1 district does permit single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings as permitted uses, and then it goes into like different lot, you know, the lot size.
Okay, okay.
And what the setback requirements are.
So, then it just becomes, if it stays R1, it would essentially be set to those levels of, hey, if there's 20 acres here, we can only fit, per county guidelines, how many houses for the lot size? Is that, or is it just a one house for?
So, yes.
I'm sorry.
So, the zoning resolution tells us what sizes the lot needs to be, and where the home has to be placed on the lot.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the local function.
Yeah.
So, R1, you have to have minimum 22,000-square-foot lot, so just over a half-acre lot. So, if you have a 20-acre piece of land, and you want to subdivide that, you know, how much area do you need for roads and stormwater, and how many lots can you carve out, so how many, you know, that's what the developer figures out with their engineers.
Gotcha, okay, understandable. Okay, yeah, I think that was our biggest worry, was knowing if it was going to be starting, if it was going to be like a compounding thing, and just knowing, you know, you know, it makes the road very busy and very loud, so that's why we're like, are we just going to have, is it going to start now and kind of be done with, or is it going to be something that takes a long time? So, that was kind of our, trying to get a timeline on everything that we have looking at, because we have a little one on the way, and we're already fighting naps and everything, so it just kind of plays into it. So, when everything starts to get even more loud and busy, we're just kind of like, where are we standing, you know, moving forward, so.
Once the road is in, the heavy construction should die down.
Yeah.
But then you have all the construction for the houses, which means a big trailer comes in with all the wood, but then that's it for one day, they unload it, and then they're gone.
Yeah.
And it's not continuous, or every day, or whatever.
Yeah.
But, you don't know what, how long it's going to be for the roads.
Yeah, so I appreciate it, I think that was our, our main concern, was just trying to figure out if there was any truth to what was going on, just because we, we had heard that it could be starting soon, and they'd be demoing all of that, and we just were like, well, could we at least kind of plan a little bit? So, but other than that, I think that's it, so.
The only thing you can plan, and you talk about noise, there are state laws that say, you know, dawn the dust.
Yeah.
If they're making noise before that.
Yeah.
Or at dark time, you can call the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
They'll be out right away and stop that very quickly.
Awesome, thanks, sir.
Because they can be fined, fined very heavily if they continue to do that.
Okay, good to know, I appreciate it, yeah. Thanks, sir. Awesome, thanks, y'all.
Thanks. Next is new business. I'd like to bring up the flags and banners, if that's all right with everybody. Everybody has the flags and banners that they have?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments?
I do.
Okay.
So, for number three, section 30, right, number three, no more than one flag pole shall be permitted for each 150 feet of frontage or portion thereof. So, that means just one flag pole in front of that house or that business for 150 feet.
Yes, that's the way it's, I would interpret that.
So, it's a reason I ask. Some businesses, they put up, such as three flag poles, right? So, they'll have the United States flag, right? And then the State of Ohio flag, and then some type of business flag on the commercial properties. A lot of times they'll fly their ISO rating and stuff like that. So, that conflict with what they do.
Right, that would not permit that, then, yeah. I know, that's, you know, and actually, Brighty had brought that question up to me initially when we were talking about, what about businesses that have multiple flag poles?
Yeah.
I mean, it isn't something we have to, have to limit, or, but it's, it's what some of the other communities were doing, but I, but I do understand that there may be cases where folks want to have multiple, that where maybe they don't have more than 100-foot of frontage, so. I don't know, you know, if we didn't have a limit on the number, do we really think that people would take advantage of that? Probably not. I mean, especially since we're essentially saying you can't fly a flag as a commercial message. You can do non-commercial, and then also just, you know, the US, the state, those kind of flags, you know, political subdivisions, so. I'm open to, if the board wants to tweak that, or change that, or eliminate that one.
Well, we can just indicate the state flag, United States flag, basically. But you're right, there's a lot of people, they're, you know, they're college, you know, like Ohio State, for example, they like to fly the Ohio State flag out there when the games are playing during football season.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I didn't view this as new business. Is this not part of section 30, signed regulations? This is, we were talking about flags and banners under signs, this is-
Yeah, we were.
This is not new business, am I correct?
Well, this is new, coming from our review.
Okay.
Heather wanted to bring this up separately.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of, I mean, it's really under, it's still part of the sign regulations, I think, at this point, yeah.
So, are we moving into sign regulations then?
Well, I was going to go new business, since we got this in the mail, I said, can we do this in new business? We can do it either way.
Okay, okay.
But see, this doesn't have-
My comments are going to relate to the signs.
Doesn't have 30-point XX, we didn't define the XX yet.
Right, 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 okay.
But I thought we could just take a look at this.
Okay.
As a whole, because if you look, staff recommends not making an exemption for flags, the commissioner also needs to consider zoning, well, is it up front? Using Manners' definition of flag and revising, staff is recommending using this, right, you know, verbatim as we go into flags.
Understood.
So, I thought we'd take, take this separately.
Okay.
Not that we have to.
Okay.
I have a question on number five. The third line down, where it goes, mounted to a building or structure with a cord, rope, cable, or a similar method, should that be a period? It goes on, or a similar method that may be supported by stakes. It just doesn't read right to me that we're talking mounted to a building or cord, rope, cable, and then we're saying stakes in the ground. I think that ought to be an or, or whatever, something in there. Or is that all, or a similar method that may be support? It just doesn't read right to me. I don't know if anybody saw that or not.
It reads right to me, Mr. Chairman, but I understand what you're, but it reads right to me.
It does?
Yes.
Can you explain it?
A similar method supported by stakes. It's not, it's not, it's giving some discretion of how to support the banner sign, similar method supported by stakes.
Okay.
But, yes.
Okay. My next question. No freestanding flag pole, this is under 30XX, number one. What about a non-freestanding?
Then it's not a flag pole. This is not, I'm not sure, what, what is a non-freestanding flag?
Building mounted?
But you say it's, can't be mounted on a building.
Can't be mounted on top of the roof.
Not on the roof, but you could mount that next to your garage door, and be, like by your front porch, off the front of your house, so.
Well, I was thinking guy wires or something of that sort. So, it wouldn't be freestanding.
Well, I've seen flags where people have them, their porch rails that go across, and they have the flag that drapes down, it's attached to the, to the rail itself, four or five as they go along.
I understand that, Frank, but we're just talking about the flag pole.
Yeah.
This is the pole, not the flag.
Not the flag.
Number one, this is the pole. So, what is a non-freestanding flag pole? I'm still confused.
Yeah, it has to be attached to something.
It's a pole.
It's a pole.
Unless a pole, you say it can't be to the roof.
No.
Unless it's attached.
Well, you can attach a flag to your, you know, to your, there, you got a rail. My flag, for example, is, comes out from my mailbox post.
But it's not a flag pole.
No, it's a pole, it has a flag on it.
Okay, okay. So, we're getting into some-
Well, yeah, I'm not sure if that's, get into semantics.
Yeah.
We'll let it go to BZA if it ever comes up, for a non-freestanding, or not.
Yeah.
If there is such a thing. Okay, moving on. Number six. Maybe, maybe I'm getting to be a devil's advocate, but, no flags shall hang when fully unfurled, less than eight feet above grade, when hung over a pedestrian walkway. How about if it's not over a pedestrian walkway? We're getting pretty particular here. And then same thing, no less than 15 feet above grade when hung over a vehicular driveway or parking area. We're seeing two specific instances where we're seeing this is allowed or not allowed. What about a non-pedestrian walkway?
There's no restriction.
There's nobody would be walking into it.
Well, then there, there is no restriction, right?
Not, that's not a trepidation.
Correct, yeah. So, putting those minimums in is to assure that if it is hanging over where pedestrians are supposed to walk, that there's enough clearance.
Okay.
You know, for folks to still walk under there, or if it's where a vehicle is supposed to drive, that it's not going to interfere with a taller vehicle.
I'm good.
Yeah. I think those would really only be applicable really in like a commercial setting, likely, you know, if you were, I don't see that really becoming an issue, you know, on your own residential property, I think, you know, as a homeowner, you'll, you'll make that decision, and most people are going to fly their flags higher than eight feet, probably, anywhere near 15 feet.
Okay.
I have two comments, Mr. Chairman. First of all, when we spoke to flags about being proportional to the height, I liked this, I think that was the example, last month you were, that was the example that I think we discussed, so I support that. The second I had was, the commentary that Heather has here, needs to, the final sentence, needs to consider if a zoning permit should be required for a flag pole. As I thought about and read through, it seems to me that that is absolutely appropriate to have a zoning permit. We're going into placement, size, height, there's a lot of things that are particular for where the flag pole, how many, where, you know, that kind of thing. Seems like we should have a zoning permit for that. But then again, I don't want to be overbearing, is the word? I'm not sure.
I think anytime, anytime you have a regulation that you should get a permit for, so you stay within the guidelines of our regulation.
Yeah, right, right. I think Brighty has it.
I was just going to ask, could it be considered a structure?
Oh.
That would maybe require a permit?
Uh-huh.
Now, I'm thinking of the freestanding, whatever that means, but the one that's in the ground, standing up tall, the United States flag, it's someone's business or something.
That's a good point.
I would think that it might be a structure.
I think it would likely fit our definition of structure, but for me, if, if the intent was to require it, I would probably want to specify that in section 11, so there was no question, and then come up with some small fee to cover the administrative cost to do that, I don't, you know, something that would have to be added to the fee schedule.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Unless it wanted to go under the general other accessory structure, which most other accessory structures require a $100 permit fee, which may be too high for-
Yeah.
For a flag pole, I think, I think that might be too high for a flag pole.
Yeah, that's what I was struggling with, Mr. Chairman, that requiring a zoning permit to a flag pole. But again, it is, I consider it a structure.
And it can't fall down. It can't fall down.
Yeah, yeah. But then, does it, does that mean it has to be inspected?
Yeah, it would be, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if we have, and that, that 40 feet is above grade, right?
Mm-hmm.
How much under grade? How much, how much, how far down do we dig?
We don't, that's design, we don't, we wouldn't enter into any design specification, that's up to the installer, in my opinion, as, as an engineer. Yeah, that's, that's not something we want to, we wouldn't regulate that.
I agree with Rich on that, but I don't know if the building code kicks in.
That's going to be in the directions of the flag pole.
Yeah.
Construction of it.
Right. Are there other communities that require zoning permit for a flag pole?
Good question. Yeah, I don't know. I can look into that, like, no. Is this something that occurred to you?
I would say yes to it, because if somebody wants to put up an eighty foot flag pole, hey, I should get a permit, and they come in to get the permit. Well, no, you can't do that, it's
Yeah. Yeah.
So cut it in half and put two flags.
You can't.
I know, I know.
You can't. They're a hundred fifty feet apart.
No, I used to put power poles in the ground in my younger days, and we had a fifty-five foot pole, we put it in the ground, five feet. Ten percent. So.
So not to define this anymore, I just thought of something. So it's forty feet from ground level.
It's in grade, right.
Grade level.
What are you thinking?
You could raise that grade, right? Or no? Or am I thinking too much into this?
You're raising the grade. What do you mean?
So we talked about it last meeting with the sign up on a mound.
Yeah.
Right.
Street levels down here.
Right, right.
So if I build a mound, that's my grade, and I put the flag pole in, so that's over.
A lot of people do that when they put in landscaping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They build a mound.
They build a mound and put their, put in their trees and stuff like that, and it's, and of course, if they're gonna stick it in that area, yeah, it would be where that mound, top part of that mound is. So that, that one definition said, forget about the mound you put in, take it down to the grade. Take it down to the street level.
Street level.
Not that I wanna put more into it, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, then it requires a survey and all, yes.
I was just thinking.
I'm okay with it. I, I understand. I'm okay with the language. But I guess I, I'll leave the question is, do zoning permits are commonplace for a flag pole?
I'll look into that. I'll, I'll let you guys know. I'll do a little bit more searching on that, okay?
I don't know if you feel differently, like, should be for sure or not.
Yeah, I, I think so, with a minimal fee. With a minimal fee. I don't know how long you wanna go, but fifty? I don't, I don't know. I have no idea. Whatever the paperwork is, you think is worth, bring it in your time, you know, to have it typed up and everything. So, few bucks to me, as far as I'm concerned. I don't wanna make it too high, because people will put in flag poles in.
Yeah.
Or they just won't come get the permit.
Or they won't come get a permit.
Okay, good point.
Yep, good point.
Okay, well, that's the flags. We'll, we'll discuss it whenever we get back to flags and banners. If we go into old business, the work on, should continue on sign regulations, Section thirty. So where did we stop? Oh, man, I still have a lot to do here.
Mr. Cameron, if you don't mind.
No, I don't.
I did review, obviously, the, the meeting from last month and saw that you, you guys did make some way through the documents.
Right.
And I know that there was some discussion about window signs and window covering and window perp and some of that.
And you have a presentation on that.
I did put together just a few slides that I figured we could just go over.
Yeah.
Of course, Mr. Rotell is not here this evening to enjoy the slides, but I'll share them with him. But if you want, we could just kinda discuss that a little bit. I do know where we left off to
Sure.
From the last meeting, too, if you guys wanna pick back up, going through that as well, we can do that.
Yeah, we, we discussed that for quite a while, and then we said we, we needed more work on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I educated what a window perp is.
Yep, we did, yep.
So if you'd like, I can kinda go over that with you first.
If you would, please, sure, that would be fine.
All right. And I, I printed out the, the presentation for you guys, too, I don't know, to give it to you now or after or whatever.
We did some notes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also put it up here on the TV. All right. So, I kinda, I went around Concord, actually, and took some photos of some of our businesses and commercial centers that we already have here. And then I also went on Google Streets and went to Manner and grabbed a couple photos from over there, just to kinda show you guys a couple things. So, window sign, this is what we are proposing in, in the resolution for the definition. This was the updated definition that we are talking about, where a window sign is a sign that can either be a permanent sign or a temporary sign. You can apply it on the inside of the window, or it could be applied on the exterior of the window, or a door. Or it could be located, you know, inside of the building, near a window, that purpose is really for folks on the outside to see that, as long as it's within like five feet of that window. That sign that could be hung right behind the window could be considered a window sign. And then, I know we talked about how do you measure the, the, the window area? And there was a little, there's a question about these mullions and the, the four inches and the building facade, and how that might separate the different window areas, and that therefore, if the mullion was more than four inches, or then those two window panels would be considered separate windows. If the mullion was less than the four inches, then that whole array of windows would be considered one window. So I think in this case, like, photos help with this. So, these are a couple photos that I took. The one on the left is from Grissmill Village. This is the little retail, Sophia's Boutique over there. As you can see, there are several separate window panes there, and we went and measured these. All of these mullions or these little separations between the window panes are less than four inches.
Yep.
Okay, so if you're looking at coverage, and, and in the, the commercial districts right now, we're kind of saying no more than fifty percent of the window area can be covered with window signs. So looking at that, this would be, would meet that criteria. It's less than fifty percent, just visually looking at it. Now, they are, I can tell you, they're, at the top, they're applied on the exterior of the window. I know they are, just because, because the way that they put those decorative bars in this development, it's very difficult for these shop owners to, to install them on the inside, because it just doesn't work. Just also note that we don't require zoning permits for window signs, so none of these have, you know, really been reviewed or approved by the department, you know, some of them might meet the zoning, some might not, some might be in place before the current resolution was adopted, I don't really know. Now, on the right, here's Subway. They have a lot of windows and doors on their storefront. And again, measuring these, all of those separations are less than four inches. So, except for the building facade. So where the brick is separating like the, the entryway and then the windows to the right, that would, so all the windows to the right of the brick building facade, that would be considered one window for purposes of area, you know, so up to fifty percent of that entire window area could potentially be covered with some kind of window sign. And then the doorway with the windows that are kind of next to it, again, that is all considered one window, based on the definition and how we would measure the, the area. Again, just a couple examples, this is over at Lucky's. The Apothecary. This could be window perp. I don't know if it is. I don't know if you can see out from the inside, but just essentially, window perp, just so you guys know, is, is a window sign. The only difference between that and a traditional window sign is, like, these ones, probably you can't see out from the inside, right? But it's really, you know, from what I found, the, the, the main purpose of window perp is for advertising. It's like, and yes, they keep them up longer than, you know, forty-five days. This has probably been there the whole entire time, Lucky's has been a tenant here, so we're going on five years, right? But each window bay area, I don't know, I don't know the right terminology, I apologize, but, you know, is, would be considered a window, like, one window area. So the, the windows on the, the far left and that, less than fifty percent, same thing with the center area, and then to the right. And then just another version, another window that they have on the building, they've got a couple different window signs. The, the liquor store sign is one that's kinda hung behind the window. So that's an example of one that was hung from inside, not either on the, on the exterior, interior of the window, but just behind the window display. So again, just showing a few other examples. The one on the, yeah, this one's really bad. The one on the left, this is over at Cryle Crossing, but it's between the two buildings. So like where the beer, the burgers-to-beer patio is, if you're on that patio and you're looking at the other building, this is the, the side of the Elements Massage Building. They have basically four large window signs that completely cover those areas of the window. They're, they're, from what I can tell, they're applied on the exterior of the window, because they're starting to come off. They're starting to peel up on the one corners there. And then they, they hung stuff on the inside to block those top windows, and then they've got a bunch of stuff on the bottom. So for them, it's, it's like almost dual purpose here. There, there's, seems to be in an area that they don't want windows, and they're also using it for advertising, so I don't really know what's behind there, but they, they're covering more than fifty percent of the windows that, that should be covered, right? And they're doing it not, not in an aesthetically pleasing way, I would say, like.
Agreed.
So it's, it's a little bit of hodgepodge here. I was surprised, actually saw that, I was dragging behind the building. When I came around, I was like, oh, wow. Didn't know that was there. And not in a good way, right? So.
On, on the one on Lucky's?
Yeah.
You wanna go back one?
Sure.
The one on the right?
Yes.
If somebody has an internal beer sign.
Yeah.
That they hang
Yep.
From the ceiling, inside, but you can read it from outside the window. Is that a window sign?
It would be if it was within five feet of the window.
Okay.
Based on the definition that we're proposing, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so if it's like, it's like clearly the liquor one, they're, they're clearly hanging that there for advertising purposes, to draw your attention there, and that would meet our definition of window sign.
Okay.
And that would be permitted. I mean, those all meet, from what I can tell, the current resolution, other than maybe being applied on the exterior, I'm not sure if those are on the interior exterior. The other one here, this is the, the Birdie Kings. It used to be the Beerhead. So to the right of their doorway, their entryway, they have like the pizza and the burger up there and like the, the glass of beer. Now, this is, the only, this is a little different, because, and it's hard to tell with the photo, but you can actually, the black areas is translucent. You can see in, you can see out. Essentially, the only signage there are the actual images themselves that were applied to the windows. It doesn't even appear that they've added tinting or anything to it. But that, that was applied more in a manner of like, like those, those window perfs would be, to kind, to kind of take up the whole entire window area, but like, again, for that one, if you're actually looking at it, and it's hard to tell in the photo, it's not a solid, it's not a solid window sign. The only, the, the, other than the white areas, everything else you can see through, it, both ways, in and out. Now, this is an example of a window perp that came from that, a sign company's website. Here, they're showing what you can do if, if you order from them, you can, and it goes through the whole thing on how, how to order it on the website, and how to design it and everything, but here's a good example of what someone might wanna use window perp for. But if you can, you can tell, I mean, it's an advertisement, you know, they're, they're selling their business, they're, they're selling you this a feeling of you're gonna come in here and you're gonna feel a certain way if you come and frequent my business, right? So even, with graphics, with images rather than words, right? Which, if you look at our proposed definition of sign, it includes not only just words, but graphics and images and things like that, but here's a good example.
Can you, so if you're on the inside, you can clearly see out?
That's mine, yes. If it's window perp, right? They put those tiny little holes all in it, like you can't see the holes from far out, from outside, but when you're inside, it allows you to look out. But for zoning purposes, window perp, in my opinion, is a different, just another kind of window sign. And as far as how do you, how do we wanna regulate window signs? Right now, we have different coverages that we allow. Do those work? Do we need to change that? Do we, you know, it's, Mr. Rotell seemed to think that we might want to allow for more coverage, I think, based on the discussion. I, I'm not exactly sure, but maybe we would want to allow business to do this, I'm not sure, so.
Thing is, now with AI coming out, there's so many different methods that are being out there now that we see on television, where they actually have people, you know, but it's all computer generated. And how valid that technology and apply it to windows can really be something in the future that I think would be very difficult to try to regulate. It's changing so quickly. Just point of thought.
Now, architecturally, if this was on Cryle, the Grissmill, buildings and the windows were, were to go, covered like that?
Yeah.
No, I, it's, it's not desirable view for me, I don't, but maybe, how, how, okay, my question would be, how does this fall under a current regulation? Is that permitted?
This would not be permitted under our current regs, right? Because this, assuming, let's just say this is all one big window, right?
Yeah.
The mullions are less than four inches, we'll consider this all one window, that'd be a hundred percent coverage, which would not be permitted.
Okay, okay. Even if it's a window perp?
Correct, yeah. We're not gonna define window perp in our zoning resolution. I'm not recommending that we do that. My point is just to let you guys know that window perp is just another kind of window sign.
Got it.
It's still, it's just a different way to look.
Here's another point of view. We, we wanna look at the, a window sign from the outside. From the outside, we're looking at a window sign. Okay, if it's a perp, okay, the, the intent is, what is the intent of, or fifty percent? Why do we limit it to that? Do we want, we want the inside to be able to look out through the window?
That's outside, no.
So we don't care. We don't care about the people. I'm asking everybody.
I know.
Are we looking at the person inside looking out? And if we have a window sign that's greater than fifty, they can't see what's going on, right? From the outside in, why do we limit it to fifty percent?
If you're asking me, for me, it, it, it looks like graffiti. If every window was covered like that, in a commercial, it looks like graffiti, like, it's just not desirable.
It's not desirable.
Yeah, that's.
From a personal feeling standpoint.
Yeah, architecturally, visually, I'm using the word graffiti, but it's just images all over the place, covering windows. Cause it's advertising, it's a sign.
It, it is advertising, yes, in, in most cases. Well, yeah, I guess even in that case, it is with the flowers, it's still advertising.
From the inside, it's not detracting anything, it's, you can see out.
Yeah, you can see out. So, but as, as the, as the regulation stands now, we wanna keep it from an outside to inside viewpoint. That's all we're worried about.
Well, the regulations. Well, the regulations don't really have a viewpoint on that. They're just defining what a window sign is and and setting a limit that you can have. And there's no distinction made whether or not you can see in or out from inside the building or outside the building. It's just, is it a sign, is it not, you know, is it a window sign, and what is the maximum coverage? And I think, as you know, what Rich said, you know, architecturally, visually, you know, trying to reduce the amount of signs and clutter, uh, confusion. If you get, can you, you know, if every business had, just, you know, if they knew that if they had a glass storefront, they could have unlimited, you know, window signs, then you could get a hodgepodge of, you know,
It may not look pretty like.
Yeah, right. They might not always look like that. I have another example I'm gonna show you on the next slide, actually. And this is from another community.
There we go.
This kind of has a couple topics that we've been discussing. Um, I cannot believe I can finally use this image. This, I drive by this twice a day. But if you look here, this business establishment has a hundred percent window coverage with all their window signs. I don't know if you can see in or out. I have no idea. Um, I know I can't see in. And it, so, and they've kind of has it like a, it it's, it's an advertisement. I mean, you know, the the window panels on the right, you know, it's a, it's a theme, and then on on the left, it's another theme. And then they have a bunch of stuff on the doors as well. This establishment, I'll just kind of digress a little bit, also has multiple flagpoles.
Multiple.
Um, I don't even know how many are there at this point.
More than three.
Yeah, and it also has a sandwich board sign that they have on the sidewalk, blocking where people walk. And then three other.
So, so on that, you have to walk around it to get?
Based on our, what we're proposing, you would not put the sidewalk sign on the sidewalk, right? It would be within five foot of the front, of your front door, your business, not blocking a pedestrian way, and definitely not on a public sidewalk. But, you know, here's another example, again, you know, just a hundred percent window coverage, a different way to do it. Drug Mart. They had a lot of small signs. Some of the window signage doesn't look great, right? I mean, it's, but it it's necessary because they're advertising, we have this, we have this going on, this, 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 but, um, and I didn't do any calculations, but, you know, I'm guessing this, this is all with less than fifty percent window coverage, you know, on the ground floor area, and then even above that, that would all be considered one window, and then the, where the doors are, that 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 would be all one window area as well. This likely meets the, the maximum fifty percent.
That falls to my view of clutter.
Yeah, it is.
Feeling of, feeling of, detracts from the.
Now, we we're saying if you have, the million is less than?
Four inches.
Four to, four inches. Okay, then you have all, if you have all four inch ones, it's all one window. How about the door? Where the million is three and a half, this one's three and a half, when they're together, it's seven.
Then those window, those glass panes would be considered separate?
Okay.
Windows.
On on the door, on the movable door.
Probably, yeah, yeah.
This is getting really hairy.
Yeah. But again, I'll remind you, we don't require zoning permits for window signs, so they, it just kind of has to self-regulate and it it it, a lot of times when, um, commercial businesses want to have window signs, they're they're doing other signage as well, and they'll they'll ask, like, hey, do we have restrictions on this, or can we do this? Um, but for an established business like Drug Mart, you know, they they don't ask, they just put the signs up, right? And so, um, it's not something that we're proactively going out and looking and calculating and, oh my goodness, this is a violation, right?
I want you to take your calculator. And your, and your tape measure.
Just got a laser.
But I mean, honestly, if we got some legitimate complaints about a particular business that did do something like that, we would definitely do our due diligence and follow up and talk to the business.
Like the flagpole one.
That one.
Okay.
Um, oh, sorry. This is just another, this is, um, another example of a place in in Menner, actually, where they have, um, different window signs on a few of the of the panes here. I don't know if the millions, what the sizes of the millions are, but just a different way to, that people have put up different window signs. Some of the window areas they've covered completely, it, um, other areas they haven't. And then another example, just over here on Menner Avenue. But what we were proposing for the non-residential districts under thirty oh five F, was that the maximum area for both temporary and permanent, and this is where I I might be proposing a change to you, instead of saying, uh, placed in or painted on, I think it should be placed in or applied to a window. Shall be no, shall be, the maximum shall be fifty percent of the window area, and then the the ten percent in those other zoning districts.
Okay.
And I, and I'm recommending rather than painting applied, because if they put it on with a different manner, then that way it covers it.
Yeah.
And then for, uh, and that's specific to to all window signs, whether it's permanent or temporary, there's no really restriction on how long those signs can stay up there either. Okay, it's just these are the rules for the window signs. This is how much coverage it can be. And then for temporary signs, we're saying if they're temporary, then they have to be attached on the inside of the building. So therefore, you know, if they're permanent, it could be inside or outside. I think there was a question about the timeframe on that, the last meeting. Wasn't there? There was a little bit of discussion about the forty-five days, but the way I'm reading what we're proposing here under thirty oh five F, specific to window signs, there's no timeframe. And then for, um, window, you know, residential uses and and residential districts, what do we say about window signs? Um, we kind of talk about them in passing here, like for the one and two fam- parcels that have one and two family uses on it. We say that, you know, they can have temporary signs, that could be ground, um, freestanding, mounted, mounted to the building, or placed in a window, right? But we don't, um, so that, so they're allowed to be in the window. So therefore, it could be on the inside or the outside. I think for for residential, most people are gonna do it on the inside of the window, but the resolution would allow them to do it either way. For multi-family properties, same thing, it could be displayed in the window. But for non-residential uses in a residential district, like a church or a school, um, the way it's written currently, it does not have any provisions to allow for any type of window signs. It has to either be a wall sign or a ground sign.
So examples of residential, Heather, would be garage sale, estate sale, or?
Um, like for me right now, I have a window sign at home, my kid's marching band thing. It's displayed in the window. Um, but, yeah. I don't know, I think more for those kind of signs, people will probably put it in their yard, rather than a window.
Yeah, yeah.
Or maybe a small little, this house is, you know, armed or security type of sign, you know.
My neighbor across the street has a sign that proud of her s- her children in school, that they won awards.
They put them in the window?
Well, in their case, they had one in the window.
Yeah.
Now they got a little bit bigger one, and they just put it in the front yard.
Yeah.
Close to the house, you know? And that, that's great, you know, parents proud of their children, what they've accomplished, so, looks nice.
And that, sorry, this is, those were for the, I just had one more slide on there, Brian, sorry. Um, and then for temporary signs, um, for those, for residential uses, um, you could have, they could have, um, temporary window signs. But the way we're regulating it here would be, um, no larger than eight square feet. And no more than forty-five days.
Forty-five days, very good.
So I don't know that.
That's very helpful.
Yeah, I'm like, I really don't know if that's helpful or not.
It is.
You know, I think it's good that John brought up the fact that businesses might want to do that. I don't know how we could allow a hundred percent coverage and and make sure we got something that would be aesthetically pleasing every single time, based on the images, we know it's, most businesses are just putting up signs like as needed, that kind of thing, or, honestly, I think if somebody wants to do a hundred percent coverage, that that should be a case for the BCA. Otherwise, I don't know how you could regulate or, um, the amount of of coverage, you know, how that, how that changes a potential building really could be dramatic. I think there's some safety things too, in addition to the aesthetics, you know, reasons why you wouldn't want to be able to see in in businesses as well.
Are the people on BCA aesthetically inclined? Aesthetically declined?
Well, their job is to, you know, give relief to property owners that have difficulty complying with the regulations, right? So it's up to the the property owner to prove to the board that there's something unique about their situation that makes it difficult to comply with the regulation, so they're gonna have to show them, prove to them, like, why they should allow for something more than 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 what's permitted.
More than fifty percent.
Well, you're right, a point though, would, is is there a security issue with, like, the county, the sheriff? They ever solicited a a question to them if this is a hundred percent coverage and they're?
Can't see what's going on inside.
Both police and fires.
Police and fire, yeah, police and fire.
Yeah, they get called for, unfortunately, like, there's so much nowadays, things happening in buildings, and they're all live on site and stuff, and you can't see in. They don't know what they might be walking into.
The point might be moot to, the coverage is at eye height.
Yeah. If it's fifty percent but below. Yeah, you can't see in anyway.
Can't see in anyway.
Yeah, but.
Well, you would have thought there would have voiced that to other community, it would have been a, something, police fire would have said, hey, we don't even want it at height. If you're gonna cover a sign, a window, you gotta cover it above the eye height.
Yeah. Point well taken. Yeah, I mean, it it's, it's real.
Yeah.
We could have less than fifty percent, or fifty percent or less, and just put it at the wrong height, then. Like I said, this is getting priest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You could really get.
Maybe something you could touch base.
Fifty percent shall not be. Maybe you can touch base with the sheriff's department, just bring something up that we've been discussing in regulations, get their thoughts.
Might be.
That might be a good idea, especially nowadays with so much violence and stuff going on. But I think that that a hundred percent perf is, uh, is out.
And e- even with, like the, like the subway example, the image of subway, they could do a nice window perf on some of that, those windows, where some of the panes could be a hundred percent coverage, but still have some of the panes open, and still be compliant with the fifty percent, based on those millions being less than the, you know, four inches. They could still do some nice advertising, even at fifty percent.
Right.
For the business.
Sure.
Because they could, they could cover one, half of that whole area to the, to the right of the the brick column there.
We're gonna pick up right here.
Thirty point four, page ten.
Page thirty point ten.
Yeah, I have later.
Eight o'clock.
So that's all I have on that. I'll make sure I share that with with John too, and he can always review the video and.
Well, with that, I I would like to go a little bit more into thirty, section thirty. And we stopped at page ten, well, we stopped at page nine with our discussion. So if we can start at thirty point zero four, on page thirty point one zero, and go down through, now, go down through permanent signs for residential uses, with the knowledge that we have that we're gonna change some of this stuff anyway.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, are we going through the clean copy or the one with the red line changes?
I have both of them here.
Which one are we referring to when you're talking about, just making sure we're looking at the same one?
Thirty point one zero, clean copy.
Okay.
And let's see. And I'm at thirty point zero four, paragraph. Let me go back over here. Where is four? We've cut so much out. Thirty point zero four, I gotta find it. There it is. Okay, thirty point zero four, A. Any questions or concerns about A, one family and two family residential properties? Do you have any comments?
No, just, um, for the record, this is exactly what we have now in the resolution, just in a different format. Each property owner can have three total permanent signs, one not to exceed three square feet, and two, the other two not to exceed one point five square feet each. Can be freeston- freestanding, mounted to their building, mounted to a building or a win- displayed in a window, um, and then there's a height restriction. This is currently what we have in there.
So, Mr. Chairman, that was actually gonna be my question. It it's just formatting. I I compared the two, they're.
Some of it, yeah, a lot of it's just reformatting, yes.
Yeah, so, uh, it was hard to discern where there's actually any revision in this thirty oh four, for me, I don't know.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, and if you were, yeah, and I I can, I know I said that at the very beginning when we started doing this, I did not change a lot of the standards because I didn't see that they were broken, right? So what we, when we, the whole point of trying to update this was to get rid of, you know, the content-based regulations, and a lot of the content-based regulations we had dealt with the temporary signs, and defining the different types of temporary signs. So I felt like, in general, our permanent sign allowances regarding square footage, number, height, all those kind of restrictions were fairly good. So, you're not really gonna see changes here. I I guess if there's something that somebody sees that they've always questioned, or, um, something that really stood out regarding this particular section, um, then we can go over that for sure, but basically thirty point oh four is essentially the same.
Same. That's what I thought. That's what I thought, thank you.
So in, from my comment under C, maximum area such freestanding sign shall be twenty-five square feet. I said too big, but that's what we already had. So-
And those are like those signs when you enter a development and it tells you where you're entering, like Devonshire Estates, or Mount Royal, or, you know, whatever the name of your development is. Those are those kind of signs that we're referring to here. So maybe at most of five by five.
Five by five.
Yeah.
Well, okay, this is, this is specific now. I guess I didn't, okay.
Yeah.
That's-
Does that clarify that a little bit for you?
Yep, that, I'm fine.
Okay.
Eight feet in height, okay. Non-residential uses in residential districts. Non-residential uses are permitted signs not to exceed fifty square feet in total sign area, either a wall sign or a ground sign, or a combination of the two. Boy, that sounds big to me. And I know that's what we already have, but that just sounds too big. Fifty square feet. Non-residential uses in residential districts. Such as, I need a, an example.
Like a church?
Church.
Yeah, or a library, or-
School?
School, yes, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, fifty square feet.
Yeah.
Fifty square feet.
It's just-
Six by eight.
The confusion might be higher because it's non-resident, non-residential and residential.
Yeah.
Yes, churches, schools, libraries.
And if you think-
Typically residential districts.
And if you think about where we have a lot of those cited in our community, most of those uses are not, you're not gonna find them in a development.
Right.
Right, you're gonna find them on Lake Concord Hampton Road, Ravano Road.
Okay.
We, I can do a little bit more looking at the signs that are out there already and see what kind of sizes they have, just to give you guys, to give you, Hiron, the, the board a more context of what's there, and maybe, if that, if that helps.
It's been there already. It's been there for years, right? Fifty square feet?
Yeah, I'm trying to think who may have applied for new signs under that. Auburn Career Center probably did. I, I don't know their, their electronic man, the EMC sign they have on Auburn Road. I could take a look and see what size that is.
The new Primrose School, I think, if I remember the, had a-
The Primrose School is a commercial district, but again, I don't even, I don't even think it was this big. I think it was smaller than fifty square feet, honestly, yeah.
Not residential.
Yeah, but I, but again, like, the, the sign itself, I don't believe was even that big, so. And that would go along with, like, is fifty too big? Maybe it is.
Yeah.
It might be.
School, church, I'm, I'm thinking about my churches, you know, how big is that sign?
Where's your church? Is it in Concord or?
Pilgrim. It's in, ah, it's in Meller.
It's not in Concord. St. Gabriel Church has a, it's nowhere near fifty square feet.
Yeah, I could, oh yeah, I could look at theirs too and see. Like I said, I'd be happy to take a look at some of the ones we have in Concord and give you some more context of the sizes of those, and if we wanna relook at that figure, we can.
Well, let's go on.
Okay.
Good discussion. Thank you.
Did you want me to do that? I'm sorry, no.
No.
No? Okay, okay.
No, no.
Okay.
Thirty point oh five, permanent signs in non-residential districts. And again, this is-
Same. Am I right, Heather? Thirty oh five is same.
A lot of this is the same, yes. The one thing that we were kind of, that we talked about was the, like, the pole signs? And the advertising, yeah. Because we kind of already went through this-
Yes.
At a previous work session, yeah, but essentially, most of this is the same.
Yeah.
We did have one meeting where we talked about, do we really wanna prohibit the pole signs versus allowing them, and the sites that may be adjacent? But I think all of that has been incorporated into here.
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at thirty oh five, on, on the new printed one, A three. Each building shall be permitted a minimum of thirty square feet of building sign area. Shouldn't we have a maximum?
We do.
It's-
Yeah, it's stated right above that, in number one.
Yeah.
Should be some of the, oh, by, yeah.
One half, square foot, for every linear foot of the building, frontage. First line.
Shall be one and one-half square feet for every linear foot of building footage.
Frontage.
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 What did I say?
Footage.
Footage.
Footage, frontage.
That's right. We know what you're saying.
Tomato, tomato, but-
That's right.
Well, I, I put a few numbers down here.
Okay.
So we're, we're a permanent sign in a non-residential district. So if I have a frontage of twenty-five feet, I can have a thirty-seven and a half square foot sign. If I have a fifty-foot frontage, I can go a seventy-five square foot sign.
And we're talking about, remember how we measure building frontage, right? If you go back to the definitions and area calculations, it's the facade of the building itself. We're not talking about lot frontage. We're talking about the building facade.
The building, yeah, right, just the building.
Yeah, okay.
So if I have a fifty-foot building frontage, I can have a seventy-five square foot sign.
Square, yeah, yeah.
Seventy-five square foot sign, right.
Wow.
Wow, that's a big sign. That's eight by nine. Seven by ten.
We also have some other regulations that might restrict that size further in the, the regulations.
Wow, I think-
Let me just point, point that out to you real quick. Under the design criteria- One second.
Which is where?
Just one moment. On page thirty point two zero,
Yeah.
under design criteria, number, under A, number ten. So a sign composed of background panel or individual letters should not exceed approximately seven, seventy percent of the height, length, or area of the portion of the building facade on which basically the sign will be erected. So if the building is, you know, fifty feet long and the sign goes fifty to fifty, edge to edge, I could say no to that and go, look, it's supposed to be about seventy percent. So you're gonna have to shrink the side, size of the sign. Or, you know, so, so there are some other restrictions in here.
Okay.
What you're reading under this section is that, here are the maximums, however, everything kind of applies. So they still have to comply with the design and evaluation criteria. So there, so it could be some other things in there.
Okay.
It's still rather large.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Higher than two point, and even at that, even at seventy percent.
Yes.
Height, length, or area.
Now, a lot of these have been in here for a long time. So just because it was that way before-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean we can't change it, but-
Right.
Wow, okay.
It's a common calculation that I saw in a lot of other communities' resolutions.
Oh, really?
Yeah, just so you, but definitely it's open for, you know, tweaking for sure.
I see one and a half here, one, I see too big, too big, uh, too big and too big again on my notes.
Yeah. You're not gonna like the large one.
We have the one and a half square feet all over the place.
I, I agree with you, Hiron, but, but as I, as trying to visualize that, it's hard without a, like, seeing it.
See it somewhere.
Yeah.
Physically.
Fifty percent, should be forty percent.
Yeah.
That's why I'm rolling over.
Yeah.
Because it's been there before, so why, why mess with what has been there for many years?
Well, it was updated in two thousand fourteen, so we're not talking thirty years ago, right? We, if you remember, yeah.
By a consultant.
By a planning consultant that we hired, that there was a subcommittee that worked with this board versus with other members of the township, I believe. So they went through a full, way more detailed process than what we've been doing in the last couple of months.
Yeah, so that, that's why it's really hard for us. You bring the question, it's a good question, hard for us to judge, well, then what should it be?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is why I didn't make it-
I think it should be small.
Okay, let's write that in. Please don't pit it. Please make it small.
Okay, well, ignore that one.
I found reading through it very difficult to, again, just visualize or even comment.
Sure.
On, a lot of, a lot of this.
If we could relate it to something like, either something we've seen in the past or a building we went by, it was signed and we saw somewhere, then we'd have that, but right now-
Not that I'm trying to shirk our responsibilities.
No, of course not.
But reading through this, until, like Heather, like, obviously I was oblivious to window perf, but this, the visuals that Heather provided really helped me understand.
Right.
And then how cluttered something-
And that's because we've seen these buildings, for one thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now, we're going through an item that's written down, you know, and we don't have the concept. Go along with it.
Okay, now, we're talking about large building setback.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Talk about explaining something, really.
Yeah, I saw that too.
The maximum allowable area for building signs may be increased by one-half square foot of sign area for each foot of building frontage when a principal building is set back more than two hundred feet from the principal street on which the building's located. Okay, that's, that is so you can see it. I, I take it. Now, the sign area may also be increased by one-half square foot of sign area for each linear foot for that portion of the building which is more than two hundred feet from the street, and facing such street when the additional sign area is included and assigned placed in that portion of the building. Okay.
Were you gonna ask for what that means?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm not even gonna bother.
All right.
I'm not even-
Because I can't answer. Maybe Heather can.
I'm sure she can, but that's- Okay. Uh, table thirty point oh five, thirty point zero five D, Delta. And my comment there is C note B. Do we have a note, note B?
Yeah, next page.
Okay. Okay, that, that's to see what, what the A and B means. Oh, so this is just B, plus any additional sign area permitted for corner lots and large lots. What does this tell me? The question I had on, on B, I have tree lots. This is thirty point O D, oh five D, freestanding signs.
Okay. The question on what? What about that? I'm sorry.
Well, I have some, I, I have a question up here. Tree lots, and then I go up to, I circle A and B up, up, above, in that block. I don't know where, maybe it was landscaping require, I don't know. I just had a comment, tree lots, and I don't know where it fits. All right. And there we go down to six A, on page thirty point thirteen. Six A, here we go to one hundred and seventy-five percent. The area for each freestanding identification sign complies with table thirty point zero five D. In a total area, both freestanding signs shall not exceed one hundred and seventy-five percent of the maximum area permitted for a single sign. Single sign is forty square feet. You can get up to seventy square feet. Boy, I don't know where people got these numbers. I'm sorry. I just think that's way too big.
So this is not combined. This is, you get wanted, so if you have a corner lot, for a commercial business, it's not a corner lot. They can have the one freestanding sign. Let's say they're in the B one district. Say they maximize it, they go sixty square feet on the one. Then they are allowed to have a second one. But that second one would be limited to seventy-five percent of whatever, sixty, sixty, right? And and it would have to be placed on the secondary street, you know, clearly intended for that. So it allows a second sign, but smaller than the first sign.
Small.
And they can't be, but then if you wanted to combine them into one and just do one sign under six C, you could do that and put it at the corner instead. But with that, it could be larger.
Could be larger.
It could be even larger, yeah. So it could be ninety square feet. Is that big? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Most, I'm visualizing a commercial- Most, I'm visualizing a commercial district where it's a corner lot.
Sheets.
Sheets, okay, that's a good example, my favorite.
And neither one of them, they didn't maximize square footage on either one of those signs.
It's a corner lot.
I know we, we had them in presentations here, didn't we? I don't have any of that with me tonight, but in some of the previous work sessions, we had some.
So would it be because the corner lot, you would have two displayed faces?
Yeah.
Two frontages, that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, two frontages, this, displayed and that.
It could be like a, like a sign like your, they could do it that way. Or it could just be your standard double-sided sign, just placed at the corner. Oh, uh.
I'm just trying to add up the space.
So like Vista Springs, over at Auburn and Discovery, the assisted living, they have a sign that they placed at the corner. But they kind of placed it where you can really only, honestly, in my opinion, you can, the best viewpoint is when you're coming south on Auburn Road.
That's right.
Cause when you're coming north on Auburn Road, I don't think you can see it at all.
Yeah, it's behind you.
They're looking at the back of it, yeah.
It's behind you.
But they have one at, at, at the corner there, plus they have a second one further down at their entrance on Discovery. Yeah, the Stup Street, it's actually, yeah, no one knows the name of the street, but it's actually Discovery. So that's another corner lot. They, they took advantage of that, we can do the one on Discovery at the main entrance, and then we'll put the other one, kind of try to get the attention of the people at the corner, at the other street.
Okay.
But should we allow them to combine it and do one-hundred and fifty percent? I don't know, maybe we don't. Maybe they still have to comply with the, the same sign area as, as, as if they were just gonna do one.
My last question, I think, for the day, or maybe not. I'm looking at seven, additional area for large lots. Do we find a large lot?
I, I think we do under seven A. So for every, basically we're saying for every twenty lineal feet of lot frontage greater than two-hundred square feet, two-hundred feet, you get that increase. So if your, your lot has more than two-hundred foot of frontage, say you're, two-hundred and twenty foot of frontage, then you get five extra square feet. So it's based on the frontage.
So we don't care how deep, okay, okay.
This is based on. It's a little different, like, so for the, Ryan, like, you're thinking like with the wall signs, we're talking about the location of the building in relationship to the street. Right, so the further back, the, the larger sign.
Right.
Now, with this, we're talking about a freestanding sign, and the, the longer that somebody has to drive past your property, there's, you know, if you have a large amount of frontage, you know, in front of your shopping center, let's say, then there, then the resolution is saying you can have a larger sign.
Okay.
Are you, is the rest, are the board kind of generally okay with these, or do we, do we wanna relook at some of these allowances? I mean, this is the time to kind of, if anyone else has concerns about them, we should talk about them now, that way if we need to make changes, I'm, I'm happy to make some changes.
No, I'm, I'm good so far.
I still find it difficult even.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Okay.
If I had a, an example of each one.
Each one.
I would be, I would be.
Right.
Much better off than what I am right now.
I, I agree, yeah.
She would have to make a hundred of those pictures and stuff, I'll have to go through each.
Photoshop it, this is one-hundred and fifty percent.
Yeah, right, right. We're not gonna do that.
Not gonna do it.
And, and it's been there for, and, and the.
At least.
Two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, but the way that I did work, and you gotta realize, I work at a power plant, a nuclear power plant. If we said one-hundred and fifty feet, I'd have to get the basis for that one-hundred and fifty feet. And I'd have to, I'd have to have it in another document because I'd have to verify each paragraph, so that's my mindset.
And I can understand your mindset working at a nuclear power plant.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because that does make a difference regarding distance, location.
A little more technical than sign.
Very much so.
Believe me, I, I spent many a nights there trying to figure out, why did you do this? Because the guy, and, and I was one of the guys back in the home office doing the, doing the basis. And I, I can tell you stories after stories, but that's, that's neither here nor there.
I can sympathize with you, cause they're, they were one of my clients for many years, and I've been to that place out there, and it's amazing what's being done. But how careful you have to be too.
Oh, yeah.
Very much so.
On page thirty point fourteen.
Okay.
F, window signs. The maximum permitted area for both temporary and permanent signs placed in or painted on a window shall be fifty percent. Do we need to change painted to applied?
Thank you.
You're welcome. I can sleep better tonight.
And what did you say we were gonna do with a pole sign? Heather? You say we wouldn't?
We have that in section J right here. That's what we decided on a few work sessions ago.
Yes.
That was something different, that was not a carryover from.
Oh, oh, is that all we're saying?
Yeah, that was, yeah.
Yes.
I may need to take a look at the table.
How, how big is Verizon sign?
Square footage or height?
Either one.
I think, if I remember correctly, it, it was thirty feet tall.
Okay.
And a hundred or a hundred and twenty square feet. I know we talked about that at a previous.
So it means?
Work session. But again, that's on Cryle Road.
Yeah.
Right, now with this, we were allowing of, of, of the parcel of, I ninety, right?
Right, right, yeah. But whenever we're talking of pole sign, I always think about Verizon.
Verizon.
I know, right?
Yeah.
I just automatically go to Verizon. Okay. Large campuses, and I'll tell you what, after we get through thirty point oh six, oh geez, how long is it? How long is it? Not too bad. Let's go thirty point oh six and call it a night.
No comments.
I, I just have to comment that we've only done this one time, when Auburn Career Center, um, on their campus, they came in front of the commission several years ago. Just because they have so many parcels in different buildings, and there was no way the zoning was gonna allow them. This resol, this resol, the sign regulations just did not work for them. Regarding what do they wanna do for rebranding the campus really, and to try to be consistent with signage throughout.
Anybody have any comments on zoning commission review?
One thing I would say, and I just thought of this, is we probably need to maybe add some kind of fee to the schedule for that. Cause they don't, unless you, cause I think the last, when we did it, we did, we weren't able to charge them anything to come in front of you, I don't know if you guys care about that or not. Maybe we don't need a fee for that, but there was no, we don't even have an application per se, nor a fee for that process, so. I mean, they still pay the zoning permit fees, so that, you know, when they, if they get approved, obviously they, they have those fees. So maybe it's not necessary to have a fee to come in front of the board, but just so you're aware, currently on the fee schedule, there's no fee for them to come and, and get this designation or review from the board.
No, I don't think we need a fee. Okay. You want to do thirty oh seven? Only three quarters of a page, and then we'll stop there.
No comment.
Define what? Oh. Yeah, I had a few comments here. On six and seven, thirty point oh seven changeable copy signs. Six and seven, EMC illumination, and says any. And then in seven, it says any EMC. Again, I'm talking semantics, I say all. Instead of any. And then down on eight. I had to look this up, what's a knit?
What is it?
Oh, I forget, I looked it up, two month, or a month and a half ago.
Never, never seen that term on, seen lumens is.
It, it has something to do with illumination, of course, but I did not know what it was. We can find out soon.
Google.
It's a unit of brightness, right? I don't know. Like, uh, in some of the lighting, I don't know if you have this, I apologize, but in some zoning resolutions talks about lightings and lumens, right? Is that a way of measuring?
It's a brightness.
Okay, I wonder if that's the same.
Yeah, luminance is a brightness, yes.
To quantify the luminance or brightness of a screen. Lot of other definitions of a knit. Okay, those were, one, one candleo per square meter, I have it here, one knit. Is one candleo per square meter. I guess we can, whoever submits a, a changeable copy sign, I don't know what a knit is, so.
Well, the, um, there's professional sign companies that design those and.
Yeah.
They'll have all of that information available.
They'll tell you how many lumens, how bright the sign is, the unit of measurement for brightness.
Up under four. I thought it would be nice to say transition time between messages and or message frames shall be instantaneous. That is, or i.e., no scrolling messages. I thought that would be a nice addition. Any other comments on thirty point zero seven?
So you wanna add that, your, what you just said, you wanna add that to that phrase?
It's already said in number five, though. The following EMC display features and functions are prohibited, continuous scrolling and over traveling.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Flashing, scanning, rotating, or similar.
It's in there, yes, in there already, okay.
It's already stated there.
Thank you.
All right, good catch.
Good catch.
Okay, we're gonna.
We're good.
Call it quits. And I have a motion to adjourn.
Uh, before.
Oh, sure.
There's only a few pages left, but I just wanna bring up one question, perhaps for the board and Heather. Under thirty ten, the signs exempt from regulation. The exempt, these are signs that are exempt, the public authority. I live on a boulevard, I don't know how many, I live on a boulevard, but that's, the, the boulevard area, the island is in the right-of-way, the public right-of-way. We're not regulating anything in the public right-of-way. They're all, that's exempt because anything in the public right-of-way, private parties not putting a sign, even though they sometimes do. I mean, they throw them in public right-of-way. So, do, do we, do we, zoning doesn't regulate, that's probably. Sheriff, putting something in the public right-of-way.
Well, so the township right-of-ways would be under the service department.
Service department, so, correct, yes, on a resident, yeah, township right-of-way, yes.
But if someone applied for a zoning permit and came to my office and like, well, I'm gonna put this sign.
In the boulevard.
In the boulevard. I would have to deny it because it does not meet the regulations, which state that the sign has to be.
Setback.
A setback from the property lines and not basically on property, yeah. Yeah, and what we have proposed does not allow for that type of sign, yeah. And I know we have some, and actually, it may be desirable for some residential developments to have that boulevard and put the sign there. Um, and actually, Blackmore State initially, when they came into the county to get their plat approved, they had it set up like a boulevard. And one of the comments I had during preliminary plan was, we don't allow your gateway sign to be located in the right-of-way. So they changed the design, eliminating the. So they changed the design, eliminating the boulevard, and put landscape easements on the adjacent sublots. So they could have, you know, maybe came in front of the township and asked for variance, or they could have politic the township to maybe change the regulations or something like that, you know, right? Or we could change it, going through the process that we are now, that will allow like a permanent freestanding sign in the right-of-way.
Got it, thank you, thank you. Clarifies, pretty, pretty, and the other, quite since we, we reviewed the flags and banners, creating the new section, i- is it appropriate to have this incorp, the new section incorporated into, and for the, for the January meeting, the cleaner, the flags and banners?
Uh, yes, I can do that, yeah. Yeah, I didn't make any of the changes yet because I knew we were still going through this, and to save everybody.
Yeah, I was, I guess I was asking Mr. Chairman, since we went through that, I think we're okay with creating that new section.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So for the next meeting, I can make the other changes that were discussed at the last meeting as well. I know there were a few changes that I've noted in here that I can, I can do. I can find the right area to put this new flag section and make all the updates on that, and then I can send in your packets, then if you'd like the, same thing, a red line copy, and then the, the copy with the changes accepted, and then for next month, we can pick back up, starting in 30.08, if the board wishes.
That would be helpful, so, because we also had attachment A from the last meeting...
Yep.
That had the new definition for a permanent sign.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yep. I can incorporate all those changes.
I thought that's surfill, too. Okay. That's all I had. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Old Business, number two, has been tabled until July 2026 or before, no later than. Next meeting is January 6, 2026. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Dean.
Can I second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Adjourn.